Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order. We have the prayer and the pledge by Councilman Dustin Swier.
Let's everybody bow our heads and say the Lord's Prayer. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thank you, and we will be thanks, and earth is with us. Give us this day our daily bread, and make us strong and trustless, as we forgive those who trust us against us, and we use a silent teaching of patience with the good Lord. A pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roco.
Mayor Pro Tem Ricky Gonsalas.
Present.
Councilmember Brooke Morcott, here. Councilmember Marla Lewis.
Here.
Councilmember David Broussard. Councilmember Deidre Ledbetter, here. Councilmember DeeDee Johnson-Reed, here. Councilmember Dustin Swier.
Here.
Thank you. Item one, public comment.
Mr. Richard Phillips, please speak on Agenda Item 4A.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Good evening.
I'm no longer on Kain radio, so I'll be able to talk to you straight instead of through the radio. I voluntarily separated. As you know, FEMA is a four-letter word that starts with F, and they give you, they will give you trouble. I know because I was with inspection and code enforcement during Katrina in New Orleans. They placed trailers wherever they wanted. We did give a permit. We were supposed to permit so we would know where they were, but all we did was check the connections to make sure they were safe. We actually find people who did not remove their trailers on a reasonable amount of time. Some people would have lived in them forever and never fixed their houses. So what I believe you're addressing is control over trailers that people like FEMA put in during emergency situations. Obviously, Jefferson Parish's magnitude would be greater than yours, but it was crazy time, and we did the best we could. We were more interested in repairing the people's houses and letting them stay on the premises so they could do it. But just a word of advice, some people will take advantage, and I think you're going in the right direction by addressing this before it becomes a problem. That's all I really wanted to say.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
All right, item two.
Acceptance of the minutes of October 18th, 2022, which will publish on November 2nd, 2022.
Do you have a motion?
Motion.
Second. A motion by Councilmember Marla Lewis and a second by Mayor Pro Tem Ricky Gonsalas. Is there any discussion on our minutes of October 18? Hearing and seeing none, please vote your machines. Thank you. Item 3A.
Herc Jones to address the council to present the Iberia Parish mosquito abatement district's fiscal year 2023 budget.
Thank you, Lanny. We'll let it rest there for just a little bit. But good evening, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you for a little bit. I'll try to be as brief as possible to keep you on schedule. I see some new faces, but again, thanks for the invitation, Mayor Decourt and Mayor Pro Tem Gonsalas. What I, I'm gonna kind of mix it up since we have, you know, some new members and, and of course, put in one of the most important reasons why I'm here tonight. But I really consider the citizens of Iberia Parish and the city of New Iberia to be fortunate to have such a mosquito abatement that we do because we're starkly reminded of disease related to mosquitoes. Mosquitoes are ironically the deadliest animal on the planet. It's, you know, hard to perceive, but it's actually true when compared to alligators, scorpions, humans, and bears and polar bears. The mosquitoes are responsible for more, millions of deaths, more deaths per year than any other animal. And so when we, when I talk about, I need you guys to, you know, tip and toss and take action and wear repellent, to call us when you have outdoor events, to call us when you have mosquito issues at your home, to direct your constituents to call the office so that we can help them. It's because of that risk. Today, this year, the state had more than 40 identified confirmed West Nile cases, not to exclude, not to count the other, other encephalitis. And more than 80% of those cases were the most serious form, the neuroinvasive disease. And so if a patient survives that, they are burdened with lifelong chronic medical issues that are hundreds and thousands of dollars to care for per year. So I don't like to put it, you know, I, I put it that way to maybe think of it differently. We don't like anyone to get sick, but can you imagine a family taking care of another family member for the rest of their lives and having that burden? That's why it's so important for us to have the program that we do, why it's important for us to surveil mosquitoes and do surveillance, and why it's so important for us to do our testing. I know 40 sounds like a small number, but that's 40 families that we're talking about there. So I'll take the next slide, Lanny, if you don't mind. So I'm gonna sum up what I presented to the parish council as it relates to our budget and how we plan our budget and some of the specific items of the budget. So the, you know, you guys are aware of the particulars related to it. As you can see, our program is, you know, kind of evenly divided between ground operations and aerial operations. Because of where we're located on southwest coast of Louisiana and up against Vermillion Bay in the Gulf of Mexico, we could not make it without fixed-wing aircraft applications. There's just too much territory surrounding us that produces volumes of mosquitoes that you can't imagine. And I'll have, I'll send the formula over to Mayor Decourt, and he'll translate it for you. It's a, two pages of calculus. But you can see in the three-year average that we're really close to 900,000, just under a million acres treated per year in our particular operation, which is just five full-time employees and 10 to 12 part-time seasonals during the daytime and nighttime work for us. Can I have the next slide, please? And our overall picture of the tax revenue, the parish-wide proposition we have for renewal on the ballot is a quarter of one penny sales tax, which I also feel is very affordable to provide us this essential necessity in our parish, not only to live, but to protect our health, provides revenue to, enough to support the program. The program itself in green operates on about a third, so mostly less than a third. And that's due to being very conservative in our projections, projections in our budget, and also being very conservative with our expenditures and looking at every opportunity to save money so we can put value back into our program to deliver every penny of service back to the citizen. But also, the beauty of the ordinance is it provides surplus dollars for drainage and drainage projects. And the city of New Iberia, parish-wide drainage, Laurville, Delcum, and Generec benefit from that on a per capita basis. But that is really, you know, I think, was ingenious when the council years ago decided to develop this ordinance, that they tied the two together and that the unexpended funds from year to year, because mosquito seasons can go up and down. We were very lucky, we didn't have a hurricane this year, so our expenditure is a little bit contracted versus a year when we have significant tropical events. And since 2006, that total number is about 30.3 million supportive surplus dollars from the protection that the board of commissioners has entrusted with the citizens and their revenues to make sure that those funds are expended properly. And 2021, we're estimating the same distribution, which will occur in May, about 1.97. That's without the adjustment from the monies unexpended from this revenue year. Next slide, please. So no need to pay too much attention to this. It's just some of the individual expenditure categories and pointing out the few that are difficult for us because, you know, we really don't know what, how tough the inflation is gonna be, recession, stagnation, stagflation, whatever they're gonna call it that we're facing. But they're basically items related to fuel and maintenance, the difficulty with getting parts, and our, you know, we have quite a few required licensures and recertifications that we have to take care of from year to year, travel. I looked at one meeting that I'm required to go to, and it was shocking, you know, to see the cost to that. And, and so those are, just to point out, some of the things that we feel will be difficult for us going forward, that we made the best conservative budget projection that we can, and we'll do our best to identify cost savings at every expenditure. Next, Lanny. We do intend, we do, we do, excuse me, we do intend to add a new employee this year. As with everyone, and I'm sure in your departments, been very difficult to hire folks, been very difficult to hire folks and keep them, which is a little disappointing from a management standpoint. But we're constantly looking for new talent because for our next 10-year period, we're looking to take the program another step forward, just as we have every year, and stay within our model of operation. Next slide, please. And so one of those important pieces, as I mentioned earlier, is the, our fixed-wing aircraft, being able to make those applications from the air. We participated in a national survey with the CDC and the National Association of County Health Officials and Officers, and Iberia Parish was designated as competent and capable. In fact, on a scale of one to five, we received a five when compared to all programs across the nation. With that distinction, we were able to apply for grants to support our needs if we should have to evacuate, you know, from Iberia immediately, to be able to take big pieces of our equipment and inventory with us so we'll be ready to operate after the storm. And it allowed us to acquire, outfit, and upgrade a sizable fixed-wing aircraft, which is able to handle Iberia Parish and our neighbor Vermillion Parish as well. And so at the end of the day, it was about a 1.3 to 1.4 million dollar project, which included acquiring the aircraft. Next slide, Lanny. And how do we get to this point, or why were we even considering that, you may ask? Is our previous mode of operation as it relates to aerial was contract services. We had an identified line item in our, in our model that we wanted to stick to. And as time went on, the contractors delivered precise, highly professional, extremely safe operations for the citizens of the parish in the city of New Iberia. And we were completely satisfied with their services, but it got to the point to where their dollar per hour, or their dollar per acre, I should say, was outpacing our budget. And also, we wanted to be in command of our own destiny. When the contractor sees, well, I could go to South Carolina after that tropical storm, do a million acres at $3 an acre, eh, 52 cents an acre in Iberia doesn't seem so attractive. And therefore, you get pushed down on the priority list a little bit. So going after our own aircraft had a lot to do with taking command of our own destiny. And as you can see, the small slices of the pie, the 150,000, you know, doesn't include some of the, you know, fixed costs related to insurance and inspections and stuff like that, but is more than adequate, as you'll see in the next slide, to handle our program, I'm sorry. And we do share those fixed costs with Vermillion. We've been working with Vermillion Parish since 2006. When the program started, we developed a cooperative endeavor agreement that outlined the specifics of how we were gonna go forward in this particular venture, and both sides are well satisfied. And the two directors, myself and Mr. Nogel, we're accustomed to working with each other on this particular matter because we used the same contractor for the previous 16, previous 14 years. So next slide now, Lanny, thank you.
Can we ask a question? So you mentioned that, it looks like, I don't know, three-quarters of the work is being done by contract from the aerial spraying. So is, is your plan for going after an airplane to actually take over more of that?
That's where we are right now, Ms. Reed. We're no longer doing contract services.
So you're doing all of it?
We're doing full in-house, in-house services. And our budget is actually reduced automatically by $100,000. And our shared cost is around $90,000 when we take out, you know, standard operating overhead related to having the aircraft.
Okay.
So it's been a significant savings for us already, and we expect it to continue that way as we plan on how to handle this aircraft. We're very lucky that one of the pilots is an A&amp;P mechanic. That may not mean anything to you, but one of our pilots is a certified FAA airframe and power plant mechanic. So that means every time he's in the plane, he's looking at the plane. Someone is looking at the plane every day. And so that's gonna ward off quite a bit of unanticipated emergency expenses related to maintenance.
And in your partnership with Vermillion Parish, are you using the plane to, to fly over there, land mask, whatever?
Yes, we are. We have a large enough aircraft that can service both parish's needs in one night and easily takes care of any single parish's need in a, in a single night as well.
Okay. And I'm assuming that they pay you for that service?
Well, we, again, they will, they pay for all of their usable or expendable purchases related to the aircraft, such as fuel, pilot time, second seat time.
Okay.
They're responsible for that. And the cost that we split is basically the overhead in maintaining and repairing the aircraft, ensuring the aircraft licensing the aircraft.
Excellent, okay.
And they pay for their chemical?
They also pay for their own chemical. The chemical is extremely, we've already, you know, we've been discreetly separating, segregating that. But yeah, their own chemical, they handle all of that.
Okay.
Our project is complete. We had a little interruption during the, you know, don't stand next to anybody, everybody go home and lock yourself in the closet. So that didn't, we didn't get to start when we wanted to. This is our very first full season using the aircraft, so we're still capturing a cost related to expenses so we can better project that budget number. We would rather wait until we have a good two to three years of actual operating costs before we change that budget line item that we have.
Okay.
The aircraft was completely gutted and upgraded to practically brand-new. I, I'm not gonna show any pictures when it was gutted because that still gives me a heart attack to see that kind of stuff. Next slide, please. And this is a snapshot of the actual, you know, aircraft budget and how we are breaking it down in major categories. Pilot services, insurance, what we expect to spend with the aircraft operates at, its expenditure to operate in 100 hours. That's typically what we operate for a mosquito season. AP services are, no longer will cost us because we don't have to outsource that. We have that in-house now. And then the chemical line item, we designate aerial chemical now, Mr. Ricky, by itself, separate from the ground chemical or what we use for everything else. Thank you, Lanny, one more slide. And you guys can rest at ease because if you can see through the window, it's a bright, clear, sunny day, and that's about 10,000 feet. That's the only time you'll see me in the front, behind the wheel. We will have licensed, experienced, highly, highly professional pilots flying at night at 300 feet over the areas for mosquito control. So lastly, you can close that out. We do have a very important parish-wide proposition for the renewal of the quarticents sales and use tax that supports the program and supports the surplus dollars. Today, we have a few more hours left of our early voting, and then Tuesday, November 8th, we hope that everyone will take an opportunity to exercise their right to vote and recognize this item on the ballot. It's identified as parish-wide proposition renewal for quarticents sales and use tax. The mosquito control is always, tends to be in the small print. So please pass that on to your constituents so they can easily recognize it. Ms. Lanny knows how to get in touch with me. So you guys do not hesitate. I speak to, you know, quite a few. When your constituents call you complaining, yeah, pick up the phone, give me a buzz so we can do our thing, and we do it very well. And thank you again.
Any questions, comments? Yes, sir.
Really appreciate the services that you're doing for our parish. I was, I had the pleasure of serving with Herf and going in the hot potato seat over his aircraft. And Herf will tell you, I asked the pointed questions, and I'm excited to see the numbers, Herf. I mean, I really thought that in the long end, it would help, it would pan out to where we wanted to see it, and sure enough, it is coming to where, where I thought, you know, it would be. But it was a tough decision to make that investment, but I'm glad it paid off for the people, the taxpayers of the parish.
Right, the grant funding put us over the top. We didn't have to pay for the aircraft itself.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, Mr. Jones, I mean, stated-armed operation. You guys do a great job. I had an opportunity to serve on the board and watch you work, and didn't realize how important this is. I mean, vote yes for the tax renewal.
Thank you.
Vote yes.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk, 4A.
Ordinance number 2022-23, and ordinance amending Article 2 of Chapter 18 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of New Iberia to add Section 18-28 relating to waiver of land use regulations relative to permitting for mobile homes, recreational vehicles, or other temporary housing located directly adjacent to an applicant's damaged dwelling in the event of a declared, declared major disaster or emergency.
I need a motion to open this public hearing.
So moved.
So moved by Mayor Pro Tem Ricky Gonsalas and a second by Councilwoman DeeDee Johnson-Reed. Is there anyone in the public to comment on this item? Hearing and seeing none, I need a motion to close.
Motion.
Second.
Councilwoman DeeDee Johnson-Reed, and I think it was Councilwoman Brooke Morcott, with a close second from Councilman Dustin Swier. Thank you all very much. Madam Clerk, 5A.
Ordinance number 2022-23, and ordinance amending Article 2 of Chapter 18 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of New Iberia to add Section 18-28 relating to waiver of land use regulations relative to permitting for, permitting for mobile homes, recreational vehicles, or other temporary housing located directly adjacent to an applicant's damaged dwelling in the event of a declared major disaster or emergency.
I'd like to clarify something before we have a motion.
Yes, sir.
I think if it's our intention to do this on a case-by-case basis.
Yes, sir.
We ought to say, waived by the mayor on a case-by-case basis to allow for expedited delivery. So I'm just adding that language right there.
All right.
And I thought if we did that before we had the motion, then we wouldn't have to have an amended motion and so on and so forth.
All right.
So if somebody wants to move this with that change?
Motion.
Second. We have a motion to move from Councilman David Broussard. Glad you're here. Who is the second? Councilmember Marla Lewis. Is there any discussion?
So I have a question. Since this is pertaining to an emergency designation by the president, will we waive the cost of the permits for the people who need a permit to put this on their property? And shouldn't we waive, because it's an emergency situation, I would think that we should waive the cost of the permit at that point.
Still need a permit, though, because we still have to inspect it, make sure it's.
Right, I'm just saying the cost of the permit should probably be waived since it's an emergency situation.
Well, that's a good point. So we're open for discussion?
I say we cross that bridge when we get there. You know, just for, you know, I mean, like, just for conversation's sake, I say we cross it when we get there, but.
Okay, yes.
You know, DeeDee brings up a good point as well as Martha. I think until it presents itself, we can cross it, but I do think the city still incurs a significant cost in going out and inspecting all these, you know, places and doing it. So we'll just be taking, taking over the expenses of, you know, waiving the fees and permits by our inspection department. So we need to be careful, you know, that we can keep it in line with that.
Jeff, you had your hand up?
Yeah, this really doesn't address permits and permit costs. It just says you still have to get a permit, so.
Agreed. I'm just asking, since this is an emergency declaration, can we say that we would waive the cost? Because we have a lot of citizens that live in poverty, and so to have to come quickly and get a permit, that's an extra cost in an emergency situation. I'm just saying we should think about them in this situation.
No, that's why I kind of like, I'm gonna call on Dustin next. That's why I like the discussion. I mean, I think I can waive a permit fee if I want to with Jimmy, anytime we want to, but it's a good discussion. Yes, sir.
Yeah, I get where you're coming from. I'm also agreeing with Ricky. We are gonna have, if, if this were to happen, hopefully it doesn't, but there will be some cost incurred in Jimmy's department because, I mean, I know he's, he's kind of thinned out right now, especially if we need to get, hire more people to take care of this alongside him. Who's gonna, or we could be reimbursed by FEMA for that?
Possible.
I mean, we gotta think about those things because if not, then we might put ourselves in a bind with Jimmy's department. I mean, that's just, that's the way I feel about it, so.
Anybody else who hadn't spoken yet? Then, uh.
And not to sound redundant, but that's where I was going, Dustin. I mean, if it's, if it's a reimbursable cost from FEMA, we got so many obstacles to cross before we get there. I say we cross the bridge when we get there. Because if FEMA is gonna reimburse it, then surely we want to be able to get our money.
Yes, sir.
Well, the only thing I would say is that in an emergency situation, we're gonna have a lot of things to think about. This could be one thing that we don't have to worry about because we've decided that when we declare an emergency, that we're not gonna force people to have to come up with the $40, $50, whatever, permit fee that it requires for them to come and have some. Because we're, chances are, the city's gonna get some, if it's a declaration of a disaster, we're gonna get some money in. So why pass that cost on to the people who are actually struggling the most trying to get their homes situated or place to live while their home is being repaired? It's just something we could have as a forethought rather than waiting until that day. Now we gotta scramble and do this.
I'll call a city attorney again.
I just think it's a different issue because you're gonna have some situations in an emergency where people can afford the permits.
Correct.
You know, they, they might lose their house, but they could afford a permit. And then you're gonna have some other situations that happen every day that are not emergencies where people can't afford permits. So I think whether or not you waive permits for people who can't afford them is a totally different issue than waiving the land use regulations that would allow mobile homes, which is really what this is, is dealing with. So I think it's a bigger question and a separate question, but. So, I think it's a bigger question and a separate question, but.
So, you else?
I understand where Jeff is coming from, but I would say that since we're telling them they need to get a permit, we can say we're gonna waive the cost. It's just, we have, what, forty percent of our citizens that live in poverty, so why can't we just be?
Twenty-eight.
Thinking about this ahead of time and thinking about them. These are gonna be the people who at least can afford to, to do this, and they may be the ones that are struggling the most to find someplace to live while their house is being repaired. We have a lot of elderly people, too, here. But, whatever the council decides.
Any other discussion on this item? On that part of the item? Okay, and back to our original, cuz that, we did get off, I like to talk. We did get off of, you know, the main motion, but with the main motion, any other discussion on it? Then I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you all very much.
So, can we come back to that?
We'll come up another time.
Well, can we not wait till a disaster happens? Put it on the agenda at a different time for us to discuss?
Yes, ma'am, you can request it.
I'm requesting it.
Okay. Item six A.
Resolution number twenty-two dash two-twenty-six, authorizing the use of ten thousand dollars of city court funds for the teen court program.
Do have a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Marla Lewis, and I don't know who was on the second. Uh, I think maybe Dee Dee got it, so. Councilwoman Dee Dee Johnson-Reed. Is there any discussion on this item?
I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, yeah. I don't know whose idea it was. That's funny.
I think it's a great idea, I think teen court program is doing a lot for the city, and we should support it.
Yes, ma'am.
I totally agree.
Any, yes, ma'am, any other discussion?
Frequently do they have teen court? I feel like I remember getting invited to go and see the process, no?
Yeah.
Okay, and I couldn't go for some reason, but I would like to eventually go and check it out, because I've heard great things about it.
Once a month, for sure, and.
But I think it's closed.
I think it's more than that.
Yeah, they haven't, yeah, more than once, but I think it's.
Twice a month, for sure.
I think it's closed because it's confidential information.
Oh.
So, we can't go, that's why they did a mock trial for us to go and watch the process. And I don't think we're allowed to go in there now.
Okay.
But it happens pretty often, because, you know, it's after hours, and I see, you know, the marshal, the judge, you know, everybody's involved in it. It's, it's at least a few times a month, for sure.
They're doing a great job.
Gotcha, thank you.
That's making a difference. Is there any other discussion?
Yeah, ma'am, I just wanted to get, so, uh, and thank you, Brooke, for opening it up. It's, I, I didn't get a chance to go to the mock, so it's basically court with a sentencing for the ju, you know? It's a diversion program, right?
Yes, but it's also, it's, it's, it's full court.
It's full court, okay.
Yeah, they do just like regular.
Ruling, right?
Yes.
So, this ain't play court?
No, this is, these kids have to.
Why not judge Judy?
No, no.
They have to actually complete the sentence.
I mean, it's all, it's all their peers, and everybody's involved, they learn the system, they learn, you know, exactly how it functions, and there is a consequence to it, but what it does, it's, it's a diversion. I mean, you know, you're saving a kid, you're giving a kid a second chance from having to go further in the real criminal system. I mean, you know, we all talk about having those diversion programs, and, and it's, it's great to see that we are, because, you know, one mistake shouldn't, shouldn't mar, you know, a young mind and a young kid forever.
Yeah, it came down SOS Summit and gave us a presentation, but I didn't, uh, get the full gist of it, though.
And also, um, based on what I've been told, all the kids actually had been, had to go to court for whatever reason, they've asked to join the program afterwards, they just thought it was such a great, you know, experience, and they wanted to be a part of it afterwards. So, that's a great thing.
It is, it is. Further discussion? Then I'd ask you to vote your machines. Thank you. Item six B.
Resolution number twenty-two dash two-twenty-seven, accepting the municipal water pollution prevention environmental audit report and setting action to maintain permit requirements.
I need a motion. Motion by Councilman Broussard.
Second.
Second, Councilwoman Brooke Morcott. Is there any discussion on this item?
I did have one question.
Okay.
I had more than one, but I.
Yes, ma'am.
Vince could probably answer this question.
I think he's working his way up.
So, Vince, I was, um, I was reading through the audit, and it said something about we had, um. Rain was causing a release of untreated wastewater for us, I think nine times or something like that.
Okay.
I mean, is there, can you explain why that's happening?
Sure, sure, absolutely. Um, you know, our system is old in parts, we've spent a lot of money fixing it, but there's still a lot more to be fixed. So, when it rains, uh, the pipes and the holes, uh, allow rainwater to get in. When that fills up, it'll come out of a manhole, right?
Okay.
Yes, that's a big part of what we do is to stop that, the whole consent decree was because of that, right?
Okay.
Um, we spent sixty million dollars to stop that, and we stopped a lot, but we still have work to do.
So, is it any particular part of the city this is happening?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, where we spent eleven point nine this year.
That's correct, that's correct, the biggest red flag is, is Brooks area.
Right, Brooke?
Right, right now.
Okay.
And then you'll have another item on the agenda here which addresses that exact thing, so.
Okay, all right, I just, um, wanted to understand why that was happening, I wasn't quite sure, okay, thank you.
It's, it's being able to find these defects and, and repair them, and it just takes a lot of money to do both, you know?
Okay, and I do have one more question. Can I ask my second question?
Oh, yes, ma'am.
Okay, so, um, there's a, I guess, when we work with, um, the parish, why is their user fee so much lower than ours?
Uh, I think it might be the opposite of that.
The IGA fees for discharges into the city?
You can read them to me if you don't mind.
It's two point seven eight nine over one thousand gallons, per one thousand gallons, two point oh one eight per one thousand gallons. I may have been misreading it, it's on page twelve.
Yeah, let me check.
Yeah, cuz their sewer user fee is higher than ours.
I just, I mean, I, like I said, I might be reading this incorrectly, though.
I might have put it in there wrong as well.
No, it's just, it's.
Page twelve, you said?
Yeah, at the bottom, B. CNI commercial residential rates.
That's not sewer user fee.
That, that's the intergovernmental agreement, uh, that we have with the parish, that was negotiated probably twelve years ago.
Okay.
At that time, yeah.
Can we renegotiate?
And, and that, well, that's something that, uh, yeah, we have some, remember that.
Discussion is coming.
You remember we hired our engineering firm to look, because the flow rate is greater than the agreement? And, yes, that, that is all gonna be looked at again, it's part of that agreement and part of the reason we're looking into. We're gonna be revamping a lot of stuff. Right now, the way the agreement is, the parish pays less than our citizens.
Exactly.
To treat sewer.
That's why I was asking, I'm like, how do they pay less than us?
That's, that's, that's internal for us of treating. Sewer user fee, their sewer user fee is actually higher than ours.
Right, but I was like, that number just seems so much lower than what we pay, and I was like, that don't seem right to me.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, cool. That was my other question, Vince, thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there any further discussion? Then I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you. Six C.
Resolution number twenty-two dash two-twenty-eight, authorizing and directing the mayor and/or his staff to complete and execute the Louisiana compliance questionnaire for and on behalf of the City of New Iberia.
Do have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Dee Dee Johnson-Reed, and a second by Councilwoman Dustin Swere. Is there any discussion on this item?
Are these answers correct? I see my name on it.
Well, I know, I gotta sign it, too, so.
Be sure.
Yeah, I, I, believe me, I, I'm not going to jail.
I'm not going either.
Any other discussion? Then I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you very much. Item six D.
Resolution number twenty-two dash two-twenty-nine, approving revision to the municipal civil service salary structure to reflect the increase in the range width of pay grade six to ninety percent effective November first, twenty-twenty-two.
Do have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
So moved by Mayor Protim Ricky Gonsalas, and a second by Councilwoman Brooke Morcott. Any discussion or questions on this item?
And that's just doing it, cuz this person's close to the max.
Yeah, we have Bonnie here, Bonnie, why don't you come up and explain it, just to make sure everybody is on the same page?
Yes, you're exactly right. Somebody, um, did, um, receive, in the middle of doing the preparation for the salary structure, someone received a wastewater certification, which we were, I was using the figures of the before and not after. But in doing so, um, yes, he's hitting, um, his max, and we would like to make, put that range out, so he can be included and receive his, um, increases that.
Every year, okay, that makes sense.
Yes, Jeff.
And the resolutions should say it's effective on the signature of the mayor, so.
Lanny, does it say that?
It's effective November first.
Okay. Okay, that will be added. Is there any other discussion or questions? None? And I'd ask you to please vote your machine. Item six E.
Resolution number twenty-two dash two-thirty, accepting the certificate of substantial completion for the West End Park splash pad expansion phase two, and authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documentation in connection therewith.
Do have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Marla Lewis, and a second by Councilman David Broussard. I saw it running today, uh, is there any discussion?
Do we have a picture of it?
I think we do, yeah. And I went by, I couldn't stay, but I went by, and they were running it, and it, uh, it's cool, man, it's big, it shows a lot of. It's fun to see it on, and I think the kids are really gonna enjoy it.
I do, too.
Colorful.
And you'll be able to use it this year?
Well, yeah, yeah, I guess.
Hey, we could probably use it tomorrow, it's gonna be in the eighties.
Next week, too.
Yeah.
No, it's awesome.
It's gonna be cool, yeah.
That'll be one of our next ribbon cutting, that's coming, but we'll, we'll be lining it up pretty soon. Uh, we have like three things, so we're gonna pack them up again like we did last time with the groundbreaking.
We're gonna wear our bathing suits.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Also in District Three. Thankful to the hundred thousand dollars that y'all gave each one of us. We put twenty-five thousand dollars back in that park, on Park Street.
Yep.
Remind the neighborhood that it didn't come easy, that's a one-time affair.
Yeah, yeah.
So, we wanna make sure that every park didn't get left out.
Understand, appreciate that.
Really good for our neighborhood.
Yes, sir, appreciate that, that's on the ribbon cutting list, too.
But we don't want that hundred thousand to be a one-time affair, though, Mr. B.
I know, but it's. We gotta find it again.
In my lifetime, that's a one-time affair. Fifteen years we've been up here.
You never know, you never know. Any other discussion on the splash pad? Any other on the splash pad, then I'd ask you to please vote your machines. What a good project, thank you. Thank you, thank you. All right, six F.
Resolution number twenty-two dash two-thirty-one, approving contract for professional engineering services with Dongang Zalbo and Associates Incorporated for services associated with American Rescue Plan Project entitled Flow Routing Project Basin D, and authorizing the mayor to execute said contract.
Do have a motion?
Motion.
Moved.
Motion by Councilwoman Brooke Morcott, and seconded by Mayor Protim Ricky Gonsalas. Is there any discussion on this item?
Do you remember what the total is for the project, the total money that we allocated for this project?
Uh, three point something million.
All right, I, my head's cloudy, so I can't figure out that percentage.
Three point nine? Right. Out of our tax money. Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, any, uh.
Brooke, you really need that project?
Yes, badly, oh my goodness.
It's finally here, Brooke, I mean, it's coming.
Yes, hopefully we start soon.
Yep, any other discussion?
Yeah, ma'am, that's what I was gonna ask, uh, the flow rerouting project for Basin D. Quick reminder what it is.
That are the issues that we are correcting in Brooks District, and we are rerouting to the main plant, and it's, uh, gonna decrease what's going in there, which will give us capacity later, and it's gonna fix some overflow problems and some issues that we're always talking about. It, uh, it's a good project. Big project. Uh, you can ask.
Vince, is the engineering totally complete already?
Uh, it's.
Oh, Bowen is working on it?
Yeah.
It, it's in progress, um.
Yeah.
And, and you guys had approved that, that project already before budget, we're just separating that contract out from the general engineering services contract, you had already approved that.
Right, and we need to do that for ARPA and just to track, and you know the way we created all those job folders, and we're, uh, going between all the departments and having some cross-check between all of our departments, so that's why we need them all separated.
I'm just, completion on the engineering and bids and.
He can give you better. Construction, what timetable?
Right now, we have a, a forced main route, and, um, we're actually gonna connect to an existing sixteen-inch forced main that we put in years ago during another flow rerouting project that was for extra capacity, so we'll be utilizing that now. Um, we're gonna have to go through servitudes, and, um, but we, we're working on it, we're getting there, so.
It, it's about a two-mile run. A pipe, a sixteen-inch pipe, we're gonna stay on school board property, on city property for the most part, but there are two, two probably, two or three private, uh, properties we'll have to probably get servitude from, which I don't think is gonna be a big deal, the way it's kinda laying out right now, but.
Good.
As far as the schedule boat, finishing up design, you're looking at what?
Early next year, you know?
Spring, uh, another three months.
Yeah.
Summertime, start construction.
So, when you say forced main, it's gonna be pumped, it's not gonna be gravity?
It will be pumped. Okay. So, so, third quarter next year, we should start seeing some construction.
Good.
Maybe before October first.
Vince, thank you again for keeping up with all our projects.
My pleasure.
We're pretty started, we, we watch you start over here, and we're gonna watch you end in a good way.
I appreciate the trust y'all put in me.
But thank you for all the work you've been putting to me years, you've been highly respected. Thank you, Vince.
You're welcome.
Any other comments? Thank you all, then, uh, please vote your machines. Thank you. Six G.
Resolution number twenty-two dash two-thirty-two, authorizing the mayor to execute a junior NBA league operator agreement by Inbetween RC Exports LLC in the City of New Iberia to host a junior NBA league in the City of New Iberia.
Do have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Dee Dee Johnson-Reed, and a second by Councilwoman Marla Lewis. Any discussion on this item?
I wanna say that I actually went to their little press conference in Lafayette. This is gonna be an awesome program for New Iberia, it's gonna put our kids on the map, and, um, I just think they're gonna be, they're gonna really enjoy being part of the junior NBA league. I think it's gonna be a lot of fun, I can't wait to watch some of the games.
So, is it open to host to all public in the city, or?
So, it's gonna be open to everybody, based on my conversations with Heather. It's parish-wide, and, um, and she's partnering with some other groups, and it's gonna be phenomenal, so.
Think it is, think it is.
We're excited about it, Heather and Crystal and.
Heather, you wanna come tell us about it? Come on up.
Heather, do you have the volunteer coaches, that's the question.
Ricky, I'm gonna give you a registration form, and you're gonna put your name on it, okay, you're gonna be the first one, all right? I, I'll be honest, uh, coaches are always needed, good coaches, yes, definitely. As far as this, uh, junior NBA slash WNBA, because of course the girls also can participate, we're gonna have our registration, it's gonna start this Thursday, November third through the ninth. It's, it is open to all kids ages, there's a, a target age, ages six to fourteen, okay? We are still taking ages four and five, but it's gonna be in our regular clinic, and ages fifteen to seventeen, which we're gonna still offer them also a part of the league, but it's not junior NBA. Junior NBA, we're focusing on the six to fourteen, that's how those rules run, and that's coming down from the NBA. They're targeting those kids, so we're, uh, we're hyped, yes, we're, we're excited. The kids have the opportunity to get a reversible official NBA or WNBA jersey, and they're gonna also send us, you know, a basketball for every team that is registered. And I think these kids are just gonna have a great, great time. There, what, the one thing that we do like about that program, it does focus on rec ball, okay? And that's what we like about it. We talk to them about the rules that we already have in place, they like our rules, so we're gonna continue with our rules. And this way, every child that plays will get equal playing time.
Yep.
And that's what's important, we just want those kids to come out and have a good time.
Yeah, that's important, that your kid is gonna have equal playing time.
Right.
And there's some job opportunities for some young people to come. And there's some job opportunities for some young people to come out there and be officials, so come and put your application in, so you can come and make a little change while you watch and help the kids develop in the junior NBA league.
Right, right. Eighteen and over. For scorekeepers, we will take them as young as sixteen. Right. So, that's always a positive thing, okay?
Good stuff, thank you. Thanks for putting that together. That's, uh, I thought it was a great idea.
Yeah, uh, also, just another shout-out to Crystal Beyonce, our programmer, she worked hard on this as well, yeah.
And I would say that Catch.
Catch.
Um, the, um, nonprofit with Albert Hill, he's working very closely with Parks and Rec to kinda make sure that this program gets off the ground. He's, he did the junior NFL league.
Right.
And he had like seventy-five kids playing flag football, so they're gonna now move into hopefully junior NBA league.
They're gonna bring their kids over, we, you know, we welcome all the kids.
Yeah, so we're excited about that.
Good.
Okay.
Yes, uh, Mr. Broussard.
Thank you, Ms. Heather, for not only this program, but a lot of programs you have been through. It's been running smooth. We watched you come in years ago and thank you again. And I wanna personally thank you for the park sign we could have at Park Street finally. We appreciate it.
Yes, yes, we're working on those.
We've been working on years to get it up, but it is coming, so our neighborhood can, uh, and our parks, we're proud of it.
Just to plug on that, all parks will get-
Yes, ma'am.
One of those signs. All right.
Thank you again, Ms. Heather, for what you do.
Okay.
No, I was gonna, this, this is gonna take the place of what we knew as rec ball.
Our youth league.
Youth league.
Um, let me, let me say it like this, um, and Deedee was at a meeting also. What, what we're gonna do, because we really tried to get the four and five-year-olds included in this, what we're gonna do, we're gonna still do our clinic, so we're gonna push that and we're gonna have them graduate from the regular clinic into the junior NBA. So, that's a good way to, to look at that. And then, the six to fourteen-year-olds will participate in the junior NBA and then the fourteen-year-olds will graduate out when they make fifteen. So, it's still going to be what you knew as our youth winter league.
Well, what I'm saying is, basically, the six to fourteen is gonna take player, take, take place of what I grew up playing.
Right, it's, right.
And what they're trying to do now.
Right.
But you said something about four and five-year-olds?
Right, we've, we've al- We've always had a clinic.
Okay.
For ages four to seven, okay? So, since the junior NBA starts at six, we don't wanna leave the four and five-year-olds out. We still wanna have something for them as well. We still wanna have something for the fifteen to seventeen-year-olds also. So, it's just gonna look a little different. It's still gonna be played at the same time, but the six to fourteen-year-olds will be the ones who will participate with the junior NBA name. Okay?
What'd you say, fifteen to seventeen, they got a league for them now?
We've always had a league for them.
I'm saying, but it's, it's, it's rolling right now?
Uh, this is, this is what, what we're offering, where registration starts Thursday. Yeah. Right.
Any?
Okay.
Any other discussion? Then I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank y'all very much.
Thank you.
All right, 7A.
Introduction of ordinance number 2022-21, and ordinance amending Article 2 of Chapter 68 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of New Iberia to add Division 6 consisting of Sections 86-101 through 86-109 relating to electronic traffic enforcement.
Do I have a motion?
No move.
Moved by Mayor Pro Tim Ricky Gonsalas and seconded by Councilwoman Deedee Johnson-Reed. Is there any discussion on this item?
So-
Yes, ma'am.
I did have one question, Freddie, when we talked about this the first time, um, I didn't get a chance to go through all of it, um, since, since we've been sitting here, but, um, I, I thought I remembered them saying that they were going to use a debt collector to collect.
We, we are gonna be, I'll call on Jeff, we've already discussed that just now.
Yeah, um, in Section 86-109, it, it, we're gonna need to make a change to say all net payments due to the city for civil violations are payable to the police department, but we are authorized to con, to use a contractor to administer this ordinance, that's it. So, there are really two parts of this. One is, we're making room in the Code of Ordinances to have this kind of speed camera violation and the second part of this is the contract with Blue Line that we talked about before that has not been signed yet, where they're actually gonna administer the program for a share of the, of the proceeds.
And I'll be bringing that contract. The first step is the ordinance. We pass the ordinance, then I'll be bringing the contract, like I bring every contract.
So, let me just say this one thing, uh, and again, I haven't had a chance to go through all of this, so I wanted to make sure that I at least bring this to our attention. If, if we're using collection agencies to collect fines that are not maybe paid by that person, we need to be careful because that's gonna hit people's credit. So, I don't know if that's a concern to everyone, but I just wanna make sure that we know that usually when somebody goes through collection, that could hit their credit and I don't know if we wanna cause people more problems than they already have, but, okay. I'm just, wanna bring it to light.
That's fine. Any, any other discussion?
Okay, so what are we voting on tonight, 'cause I was really confused.
Tonight, we're voting to have an ordinance which allows us-
Which is, we don't have right now, like-
Which we don't have right now, so this is the first step. We need an ordinance that if this passes, then we can go to the next step, which is to entertain a contract with Blue Line to do this. And then I'll bring the contract back and then we have another discussion about the contract, which is, you know, healthy, and then I can sign the contract. But in the long run, just for everybody out there and for all of us to be on the same page, the speed cameras are only in the school zones, only active while a school zone is active and it's only the school zone. So, what it does is stop our speeding in the school zones, which is one of our critical areas. The second thing that it gives us is LPR cameras, so we now identify any car that's going through there, any car that would turn in and wanna do harm to the school, anything like that. We can quickly identify them through those LPR cameras, 'cause it reads the license plate. So, it gives us a level of security at a school that we don't have. Right. Um, and it stops the speeding in the school zones, which is one of our, you know, very big complaints and, and has been a huge problem.
It is.
So, yes, sir.
And tonight, we're introducing it.
Yeah.
So, we still have public hearing and adoption coming up.
This is just us agreeing to entertain this ordinance, right?
Yeah.
Just to introduce it.
Okay, gotcha. Just wanted to make sure.
No, that's fine. Like I said, more steps, everything's a process.
Right, right, of course.
Yes, sir.
Go ahead, Ms. Lemon.
Oh, I didn't see you. Yes, sir.
Question, um, it talks about the hearing officer. Is the hearing officer somebody new or different, or is it gonna be the police chief?
Um, different ordinances have different systems. We thought it would be best to have it to be an attorney, either the prosecutor or somebody else appointed who's got five years' experience. One of the drafts had us using the city judge, but I don't think that'd be right if we're gonna go to the city judge.
Yeah, if we gotta go to the city judge, it shouldn't be him.
So, I don't think that's really gonna fit, but we have to have some due process for people who contest these, these charges. And we thought if an attorney did it, that would be best.
Okay.
And not the, not the police chief.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
This has been done in many other parishes, not to say copycat what they're doing, but follow the safety for the schools, children. Yes, I might get a ticket myself, they'll make me back it down other parts of the city. Wherever I'm driving, I'm retired now, hey, I have no reason of going a lot faster than I used to do. So, I admit it myself, we're gonna get some of these tickets. It'd be the safety of the children in that area through school time. So, we're following the lead of a lot of other parishes, cities that have implemented this.
Yes, sir.
No, I was gonna ask if it's gonna be running all day or just during?
Just during, the only time this will give tickets is during, the LPR cameras will run all the time, I think, which we won't.
You got your blinking lights for school zone.
Whenever the school zone is active.
Is active.
When the blinking lights are on, at the times that you are not supposed to speed.
Right.
That's when it will be, that's when it will issue tickets. That way, we have some safety. Now, the LPR cameras, I'm hoping, work all the time. We have our assistant chief here. That's my hope, is that the LPRs work all the time, because, you know, bad people cutting around town, I wanna know where they are and whenever we can.
Are the LPRs the same as this? I'm, I'm confused on that.
The camera has an LPR built in. So, it reads those license plates where we can identify.
Okay.
So, that would happen to me all the time, because it's another great safety feature. You know, I'm trying to, God forbid, we have a school shooting or something, but I would like to be able to identify people who, you know, when, when the officers are looking for someone and when we have a shooter at large or some dangerous criminal at large, it would be nice to be able to read those cams. It's the same thing we're gonna have when we, uh, camera, you know how we're talking about using other money that we have coming in to camera many areas of the town? It's, it's a safety thing, it's to give the police a, a new tool.
Now, LPR is the one that takes the picture of the license plate every ti- okay. All right.
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
I see, uh, the fines for the different, um, excessive speeds. Is there, are we gonna have anything to address multiple offenders? Say you get five tickets in this zone or three tickets or?
I don't think we went that far, we, they'd be paying every time.
Where do you see the fine at?
What's that?
There, it's in, uh, Section 102.
Maybe it's not in my packet, that's why I was so confused.
It's in this, just watch.
Oh, it's in the new stuff?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
It's hot off the press.
We, we don't have that, I haven't seen that. This is a civil fine, so it's not a criminal thing.
Right.
So, you know-
I didn't see anybody who, who had other penalties.
So, Jeff, that's gonna be worked out during the contract phase.
What the, um-
Well, the fines, we set, we set in the fines by-
We set the fines in here.
I know, I saw them, but I'm-
Ordinance will set the fines.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, it's not gonna work like a normal ticket you get for speeding?
It's a civil.
It's a civil fine.
Okay.
Yeah, it's not a criminal charge at all.
Okay.
So, bottom line, you don't go to jail for it, like Ms. Deedee said, it goes on your credit.
Yeah. Yeah. And if you do five of them, then you gotta worry about your credit five times. I saw it walking back in, so. Yeah. Well, wait, why don't you come, why don't you come, I got all cranked up. Why don't you come to your seat first? Yeah, we were ready to vote.
I'm sorry, but-
No, we've been waiting on you, I'm sorry, I got cranked up.
I would say one thing, when people don't pay their taxes, we don't put it on their credit, so let's not do that either on this thing.
No, we take it, we take it from them.
But this is how it is all over the country, everywhere they got cameras like this, that's how it is.
So, you think?
No, ask me how I know.
How you know?
I travel all over the country.
So do I, but I guarantee that's not everywhere.
Trust me, it's all in the state of Louisiana.
So, have we decided?
I just paid the ticket when I got it, I don't know. Yes, ma'am.
All school zones or is that not decided yet? I didn't get to read this, sorry.
Yeah, yeah, it will be in all the school zones.
Okay, every single school within the city limits?
Yes.
Okay.
Now, they are doing a try, the, the one thing is, they are doing a study.
Right.
'Cause once we pass this, ordinance is the first step. The next thing that Blue Line is gonna do is put the cards out, do a study, they've already kinda started on that and they're gonna identify, I mean, they wanna know what they're getting into too. So, they are already gonna get that data and understand where the speeders are, what school zones, where the cameras would be the most useful. I can't promise they're gonna put cameras at every, if they have some areas that they do a study and don't find any problems, they're gonna start with the hotspots for sure. Also, we talked about that they would be flexible, because if you put cameras in some school zones and then people start speeding in some other areas that are school zones, we want that flexibility. They'll come back out, they'll do a study, they'll find out where they need to go there and that's all included in, in what they do.
Okay.
But I think that study's really important, because they're gonna know where to put those cameras right from the beginning.
Are we limited with how many cameras we're supposed to be giving?
I think it just depends on with the, after they do that, their study of how bad it is.
Okay, gotcha.
Uh, that is their business and so they're, they're not gonna wanna put less cameras. I think that, I can understand from a business point of view, they don't wanna put them where they're not gonna have any activity. I mean, part of the goal of this is to make the school zone safe and if it's already safe, they're not gonna waste the camera, they'll put it somewhere else.
Okay, gotcha.
But I was excited that they weren't just coming sticking them everywhere and they were actually working on a study, doing something that had actual facts, you know?
Excuse me. I have another question.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, these Sections 86-107 and 86-108, are these things that we put together or something we got from them? It's 86-109? Because I almost, I mean, my memory may be a little fuzzy today, but I can remember asking this guy a question about whether or not this is something someone could end up going to jail and he said, "No, this is only civil" and this thing is saying that failure to appear, you can get a warrant, could be issued for your arrest. So, I'm just trying to, to make sure we're clear, because that's not what we said when we initially talked about this. And I'm sorry, I mean, this is, I got here later than I normally did, so I didn't get a chance to read through the, the whole thing, it was on my desk. But I just wanna make sure we're consistent in what we say to the public, 'cause the last time, I'm almost positive, when I asked that question, he said that it wouldn't be something that would be, would end up in a criminal court.
You're looking at 86-108, enforcement of failure to comply with an order to pay fines issued.
Yeah, violator fails to appear, warrant for their arrest will be issued for contempt of court.
Okay, where are you?
86-108. And I, again, I'm just asking a question, 'cause I can almost remember the guy giving me that answer and we may have to go back and listen to it again, but I just wanna make sure we're consistent.
Yep.
I mean, it says we can, we can get a subpoena in city court. So, that's a judge's order in city court. And if you don't obey a judge's order in city court, you can be held in contempt, so I mean-
I know, but I thought he said that, that-
The criminal violation is not the speeding, the criminal violation is not following the judge's order.
Right, two different things.
When he says show up in court.
The other word, the civil thing is just a ticket, the other thing is now you-
No, but I thought he said this was always, this is gonna be civil and it wouldn't end up in that court. And I, maybe I'm, again, my mind's a little fuzzy today, but-
If you have any civil proceeding where a judge says show up and you don't show up, it can be a criminal contempt. I mean, that's, contempt of court is kinda like an infected civil proceeding. Okay?
Oh, no, I mean, I, I get what that, what that's about, I'm just, and I'll go back and listen to my question and answer again, but I almost can remember this guy telling me that, "No, that's not what this is. This will just be civil, they pay the fine and that's it."
Yeah, and for them, it is just civil.
I know, but then at one point, when would, when would, when would the judge get involved if it's just a fine and then a collection is from a debt collector? When would the judge get involved?
Well, if somebody challenges it, soon as they don't pay the fine.
It, it could, it can be enforced in court and if the judge just show up, they have to show up.
I guess I'm trying to figure out, how do we go from, I just have to pay a fine or I don't pay the fine and I go to a debt collector versus now how do I end up in court? court? I'm just trying to understand in my, in my mind, how do I go from one place to the next? Because that's not what I understood it to be the first time around. Again, it's been a while, so I may be, you know, misunderstanding my own thoughts.
Hang on, one, one at a time, one at a time. Jeff, when you have a civil proceeding, you still can end up in court.
Yeah, and if you, if the judge just show up and you don't show up, then it's, then it's a contempt of court. But it's, it's not the speeding that gets you in trouble, it's the not showing up in court that gets you in trouble.
And I understand that, Jeff, what I'm trying to understand is, how do I go from, I didn't pay my fine, and it went to a debt collector, to now I'm in front of the judge? Because if, at that point, why would I ever go to the judge? Because it's, it's going to the debt collector. Now it's on my credit.
But when you don't pay, the debt collector can take some legal action.
Okay. Okay, okay. All right.
I'm trying, I understand, you're just trying to follow the path.
Yeah, I'm just, I wanna make, you know, I mean, it's gotta make sense in my brain, so.
And this, and this was put together late last week, and y'all didn't get it in your package, so please just read it, and we'll talk about it.
Yeah, I mean, that's fine, that'll give me a little more time.
This is just our introduction, so.
Yeah.
We're gonna have another round of this, like we always do, because we've got process, and then, once this passes again, if it passes, then we go to the phase of the contract and the rest of the stuff.
Okay.
But the more discussion we have tonight, the better, because we got, we got what we gotta chew on, and we know what we have to think about. Uh, anybody else? Yes, sir?
I just think that when, when you pass an ordinance with civil fines involved, there is a civil, if you don't pay the fine, there is a procedure that has to be followed. I mean, you just can't, if you don't pay, don't do nothing, there's gonna be some repercussions down the road, and as you don't pay him, and you just move forward, and if you get to where you don't appear in court, then it is a criminal violation. Just, that's just the way that the law works, one step after the other. See how it's eliminated, but maybe not.
Go ahead.
I know this, the, the contract and the ordinance are two separate things, we've talked about this already. So basically, we gotta get the ordinance into effect, in order to get the contract even going. I do agree with you, I mean, he did say, it is, it's a civil matter, you pay a fine to their service, they reimburse us. We don't have our hands any tied anywhere into it.
Right.
But we have to have the ordinance set in place, and even go forward, even for the medicine contract. So, when it comes down to a civil proceedings and all that other stuff, I mean, that's kinda out of my realm, that's not what I'm looking for. Um, but, um, I can understand what Jeff's saying, I think we need to, we need to really think about this a little deeper. I understand what you're saying about the civil matters, and, and having to go in front of a judge, but what if it's flip-flopped around? So say, the person doesn't agree with the fine, they wanna go to court, and then you get subpoenaed, both of the, the company and you, you still gotta go in front of a judge, and a judge might put the hammer down and say, well, no, you got to pay the fine based on evidence. So, it's still gonna go into the court.
But then, at that point, why would I be a failure to appear, if I'm the one who wants to go to court?
Hey. Never know?
You're right, okay, okay.
Never know?
I'm just, I'm just, I'm just asking.
I understand.
The question.
I understand, yes, sir.
No, I'm, I'm with Deedee as well, it seems like the debt is the penalty.
Yes.
So, why are we in front of the judge? I, I, you know, if the debt is the penalty.
Mm-hmm.
To me, we way out of, you know, what, what we have to do with this? Once it gets to court, we way out of.
Yeah, we don't have anything to do with that, but still.
I got one in Lafayette fifteen years ago, and I didn't pay it, it was for like fifty dollars, and the company went out of business, and it never came on my credit. I'm just saying.
I get it from Dallas all the time.
Yeah, I just paid mine when I got it.
Been there before.
All right, Mr. Broussard.
This is the law of the land, we're kinda crossing lines. If it's good for the goose, it's good for the gander. Let the law work. If you end up in front of the judge, you end up in front of the judge. So that's how I feel, if it's a law already, we don't wanna mess with changing the law for this one incident that we're working on right here. So if it's law of the land, let the procedure work out like it should do.
Yes, sir.
So basically, if you don't want bad credit, you don't want speeding tickets, you don't want fines, just don't speed.
That's right.
Yeah, especially in our school zones.
In a nutshell.
And that's, and you know what? The extent is, what, what are we trying to do? Exactly that. Exactly what we're trying to do, stop speeding in school zones.
And we shouldn't have the public saying, it's only gonna go on your credit.
Yeah.
That could be a bad thing.
Is there any further discussion?
I just have a comment to make.
Yes, ma'am, you haven't made one yet, so.
Well, I did.
Oh, yeah, you did, you asked a question.
Because I did read this while, because I came early.
Yes, ma'am.
And that was one reason I kinda got confused about the judge and all of that, with, you know, maybe so many times should be, um, in there, but, um, you explained it's civil. But if we do this, and we get the cameras like we plan to, it frees up, uh, police officers, who normally would be in those areas, different areas, doing the, the school take in and let out hours, and it frees them up to do, I wouldn't say more important things, but, you know, fight seri- most serious crimes.
It's true, I mean, officers have to prioritize what they do every day, and they are calls that, that get, you know.
Yes, yes.
Prioritize, it happens.
Yes. So I, I think this is a good thing for that, uh, because we do have serious crimes going on in town that we definitely want to work on, and freeing them up from traffic things, uh, will be a help in that area.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
So if we vote on this ordinance, I mean, because I'm uncomfortable voting on it, because I haven't read through it, and I have lots of questions.
Introduction, so. You can kill it, I mean, you know, that's the way our process works, you can kill it next time. In other words, if you vote, all you're doing is voting to pass it on, so that we can bring it as, uh, you know, have our public hearing, do what we do, get input from that, and then we either vote for it or don't vote for it, or we amend it before we vote for it. So, so all we're doing tonight is moving it up in the process.
Okay, I just wanna make sure that, after reading through this, and coming back with my concerns, we could either amend it or kill it.
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, we vote on it if, 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 you know, but the process works.
Well, yeah, I know, I'm saying, if, if everybody agrees.
You have, right.
Or I could just vote no.
That's exactly right.
Okay.
But, yeah, this is just the first step of the process.
Because some of this makes me a little uncomfortable, but, I mean, I, I, I'll read through it tonight.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
I did pay that ticket. I was mad, because I went to a little suite, they wasn't in the courthouse. I went to the courthouse, Lafayette Parish courthouse, and they say, well, we don't, we don't deal with this, and they sent me to a suite in an office building, and I paid it over there, and then they went out of business, I remember that like that. They took my money and went out of business about.
Is there any other questions or comments? None? Then, uh, then I would ask you to please vote your machines. Thank y'all, and the discussion will continue. That's, that's the good stuff. Uh, seven B.
Introduction of Special Ordinance Number 2022 dash 2023 dash O2, Amendment Number One, An Ordinance Amending the Budget for Receipt and Utilization of Funds Related to Act 170, and Setting for Public Hearing on November 15th, 2022.
I need a motion.
So move.
Mayor Proton Ricky Goslin, and second by Councilwoman Deidre Ledbetter. Is there any discussion on this item?
These are just those funds that we got from the state.
That's the funds we got from the state, Act 170, fifty goes to the Pepaplex, and fifty goes to renovate the courtroom downstairs.
Right.
Okay, then no other discussion, please vote your machines. Thank you. All right, seven C.
Introduction of Ordinance Number 2022 dash 24, An Ordinance Amending the Capital Asset Threshold on Fixed Assets for the City of New Iberia to $5,000, retroactive to November 1st, 2022, and Setting for Public Hearing on November 15th, 2022.
Do you have a motion?
Motion.
Okay.
Motion by Councilwoman David Broussard, and the second by Councilwoman Deidre Ledbetter. Deidre Ledbetter, is there any discussion on this item? Going too fast. Hearing seen none, please vote your machines. Thank you very much. All right, councilman's remarks, uh, Councilwoman Mark Cott, I'll start with you.
Okay, um, so this coming Sunday, November 6th, I'm having the Free Garage event. Uh, if anyone wants to donate items, gently use items, you're more than welcome to, just call me, get with me, uh, my number is 578-8508. Um, I think I forgot to mention, the last time I announced this, uh, any leftover donated items that we have after the event's done, uh, we disperse throughout the community, and the different organizations we have in town. Um, so I usually do that the following Monday. Uh, what else? Oh, yeah, so, just in case the public is not aware, we are transitioning trash companies right now. I saw a few people comment that we did a terrible job at advertising. So, if you have not received your original Pelicans bin, um, if you want to request a recycling bin, or if you need to lease a new Pelicans bin, their phone number is 337-321-5171. Your Republic bins, if you still have your old Republic bins, they told me that they'll be done by the end of the week. I don't know if anyone else has reached out, but that's what they told me, they should have all their bins picked up by the end of this week. Uh, if it's not picked up by the end of this week, you can call Republic, 337-806-2000. Um, you can also email Pelicans, if you would like. Their, uh, email for, and this is to just, I think, request recycling.
Mm-hmm.
Because it's ni recycle@pelicanwaste.net, and that is all I have.
Thank you.
No comment.
Sir?
Recycling, new garbage company, I'm getting many of calls. Uh, be patient with us, it's new, it's gonna work. If you need a recycling bin, please call the mayor's office, awesome numbers Ms. Mark Cott gave you. You won't get one unless you call, so please do that if you'd like to recycle. And by the way, if anybody in my neighborhood, or anywhere in my district, wanna get ahold of David Broussard, 380-1211. Don't put on Facebook, we can't get ahold of David Broussard. Any call you call up, Mr. Gosham, our parish council member in my neighborhood, he has to come through David Broussard or the mayor to get things done. So, I wanna correct anybody in my neighborhood, or in my district, that yes, we do call on every call you call in on. So, uh, road tax, yes, we all should support this, it's not a new tax, it's a renewal tax. So again, I told you to call me, but don't call me if you don't support this road tax because of the roads. We have to pay for it some kind of way, and this is a prime, good example, that we're not putting a new tax on. We renewing an old tax, an old thing, and we just trying to get this through. So, by the way, call me, but don't call me if you don't like your roads. We being stern, I'm in my second term. I'm getting old up here, Mr. Mayor, we've been fifteen, sixteen years, fighting some battles.
Yes, sir.
So we had a good roundtable right now on this road tax, so yes, I'm supporting you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for the idea.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
That's hard to follow, Mr. Broussard.
You won't beat him. You won't beat him.
I've been through an operation today.
I was about to say, there's some leftover, uh, drugs or something in your system, because you did a good job.
Another reason is that I appreciate all of y'all supporting me on my elderly operation, and I've been out of pocket a little bit before, that, that drug they put me in, it did this operation, has wound me up tonight.
Yes, sir.
You did an excellent job.
Please call me, but don't call me.
Yes, sir.
Just to follow up, it, it, next Tuesday, the vote for our community, and the future of our community in the streets, I think it's, it's a great opportunity, great opportunity for economic development, and I think it's a necessity for our growing community, so let's go out and support and go out and vote.
Thank you.
I just, uh, would like to announce Neighborhood Watch, uh, for this month will be on the second Thursday, which is November the 10th, at six o'clock PM at the Slimen, and at this particular one, this is, uh, our Thanksgiving dinner event, so please come out, um, and enjoy a little fellowship and some information. So, hope to see you, November the 10th, six o'clock at the Slimen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um, I have a couple of announcements, uh, tomorrow is our Downtown Neighborhood Association meeting at the Slimen at six o'clock. Um, we're about to paint another house, so if you are interested in coming out to help us, please come tomorrow at six o'clock to get more details. Also, um, November 5th, this Saturday, we're gonna have our second St. Matthew Cemetery cleanup, and we're asking people to come out and help us finish the job that we started on October 8th. Uh, the graveyard's looking much better, but we need to finish the work. Uh, I've actually seen people out there, um, you know, going and, and putting flowers on their loved ones' graves, today is All Saints Day, so I'm sure the graveyard looks really pretty. Uh, I would say, wear long sleeves, Councilwoman Lewis and I were out there pulling branches and everything, and we both got poison ivy, and it was not, it wasn't nice.
It isn't.
Also, uh, November 14th, just wanna remind everybody, if you have, uh, if you live in a family home, and you'd like to get that home in your name, and the only reason why you haven't is because it's very expensive to open succession, please come out on November 14th at 12 o'clock at the West End, uh, Park Meeting Room, Martin Luther King Center, um, um, Meeting Room, because we're gonna have a lawyer out there telling you how you can open up succession for as little as a hundred and five dollars. Also, on December 3rd, we're gonna clean up Hopkins Street, um, it's gonna be from like nine in the morning till noon, we're gonna clean Hopkins Street and all the surrounding areas, we wanna get the area ready for Christmas, because all of our Christmas decorations will be put up, and we really want the area to look clean and festive for the community. And then, um, I would say, I wanna reiterate what the, um, Mayor Proton said, please go out and vote, it's an important vote, I know it's not the presidential election, but, you know, as we've always told you guys, the local elections are more important to your day-to-day life than the presidential election, so please do not skip this vote. And then lastly, I would say, for those of you who've been calling saying that, you know, there's trash on the side of the roads, I know you guys know that Pelican has been extremely busy getting cans out to everyone, please give them some grace, they are gonna pick up all the trash, you know, this isn't gonna be something that's gonna happen overnight, it'll be transitioning over for the next few months, just give them a little grace, it's gonna work out, but everything new takes time, and there are bumps and obstacles that we didn't foresee that are gonna happen, and we're asked that you be patient, and, uh, and give them time to catch up, so that you will be really happy with the service in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
After all of that, I think I'm good.
Okay, well, thank you, I'm glad you're good.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
And I apologize, I definitely don't wanna go after you, but I do, listen, I ve- no, but I'm, you know. Dustin, I value this seat so much, being an elected official, and how I got here is by way of an election, and I would be remiss if I did not encourage the voters of District Two to go out and vote. Every election is important, November the 5th, go out and vote, yes.
Eight, November 8th.
November 8th.
November 8th, I'm sorry, November the 8th, uh, go out and vote on the road renewal, on the renewal tax for our roads, as well as the mosquito control, vote yes for those taxes.
Thank you, thank you. I have a few tonight, first thing I wanna say is, you see all the community events that we talk about at the end of the meeting that are coming up, please send them to my office, so I can get them on the website, and get them on the city's Facebook, I can get them out there for you, because a lot of these, you organize yourselves, I, I, you know, I'll help any way I can, but, you know, if, let's use the city's social media and really get it out there.
Okay.
So, all those dates and stuff, just like I said, call Hillary or Sandra, and, you know, I wanna help you promote them, because, you know, it's, it's, we're all one community. Uh, that's the first thing, the next thing is, it's no new tax burden, okay? That's the way we're supposed to say it, it's not, we are paying off a sewer millage with money that we have, and then we are asking the voters to bring that millage right back. So there's no tax increase, but it is no new burden, and that's the way I like to put it, because we're not raising taxes at all. It is a way for the same money that we can address our roads, and have over thirty million dollars over twenty years to spend on our roads. So I'm asking people to vote yes for it, it immediately lets us bond out about ten million dollars more, which we would be able to do that in January, I've talked to Jason Akers, we could bond out ten million more, our road program of twelve point five million is ongoing, and will still be ongoing till probably, uh, the spring. So this is a way that we would not have a gap in service, we would continue to fix our roads. It also gives us seven hundred thousand dollars a year for twenty years to do road maintenance, so that we can prolong the roads that we have that are good, which is about twenty percent, plus the ones we're addressing now. Uh, it also allows us to have a shelf life, God willing, I, I could do one more term, but the next mayor in ten years would be able to bond out ten million dollars more. So it comes to a total of around thirty-five million dollars that we can use and utilize of tax dollars without raising taxes. So I can't put it any plainer than that, it's important, we don't have another way to do it. You know, we could, we, we need this money, or we will do like every other administration and do one major road program, and then wait twelve years to do another. Well, our roads are the result of that, and you can see when you ride around our city, that, that's not working. We have to try something new to catch us up. So I'm asking the voters to please consider voting yes for it, it is very important, and it allows us to continue some infrastructure work, and that is, you know, we do a lot of other things, and we worry about, uh, quality of life, and we worry about all of our communities, and we really try to reach out through this whole city. But I'll never forget, and, and we always should not, that the main function of government is infrastructure. So one of the main things we need to do is our roads, and this is a way to continue without a tax increase. Let's see, and Pelicans, Pelican started today, so this is the first day of a contract. No, it has not been, you know, and some, some people have complained, I read Facebook, I see, we take the calls, you know, the cans are, they had five crews out today putting cans out, they had the owner of the company here, they had, you know, extra crews. You know, it is the first day, it is a transition, I remember the transition to Republic was allied before that, we were on the council. It was not smooth either, it is a huge undertaking. Um, I saw Republic still picking up trash today, well, they were, their contract ended today, they're still picking up trash. Uh, they had some areas that they needed to catch, they're still picking up cans, they have crews here to do that, the cans are still in front of my house, but, I mean, they're gonna get picked up, so they are determined to get all their cans back, and it will take through this week, uh, it might even take a little longer than that, but it will take through this week for them to pick the cans up. If you have an issue with Pelicans, please call, we're documenting all the issues, we are gonna watch, but we need to give time for this to, you know, to settle in. It is a transition, we have all kinda tracks in place, we are tracking, I'm, I'm monitoring all the cans, my people are taking calls, Pelicans is gonna give me a report, the, every month of the misses, every month of the issues, but, but we need to give them time to start. So I ask people to please be patient, I, I saw some great examples of people being patient, and some great examples of people not being pa- very patient. But my staff is dealing with it, we're taking the calls, we're passing them on. Um, I had a complaint today about the call center, uh, they, someone called Homa, and I know that we are gonna have a local call center, I'm hoping that it's active already. We, uh, we have a website, they have a website, uh, you know, my staff is documenting the issues. And I know, I talked to Tommy T. probably five times today, you know, today alone. Um, I talked to Kishony two or three, uh, you know, we have people we can talk to, we are, we are actively communicating to catch any of the mess-ups or any of the, the, the oversights, but today was day one. I mean, I, I, I think that you do have to take a breath and give people a chance to make a transition. With that said, um.
I'd like to acknowledge.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to acknowledge Shudu Lewis.
Oh, hello, Shudu.
He's up on the school board. Yeah, I appreciate you're a member, you're, you're supporting, you know, we appreciate you being here, Shudu.
Thank you. Thank you. With that, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Motion.
Thank y'all.